Good evening, Facebook land. We'll get going right at the bottom of the hour.
No, I'm not.
Good evening, everybody. It is five thirty tonight and we will. Well, I can't necessarily call the city meeting to order because I do not have a quorum of council members. I have Steve D here in the office with me. I have Councilman Merja by Zoom. I do not have Councilman Howard. He called in as out of service. And I don't know where Councilman Kukuli is at the moment. So as far as dictating any city business until I get another member present, we cannot, but what we'll do first of all is those present will stand under the pledge of allegiance and we'll go from there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're all standing and Councilman McCuculli walks through the door.
Was like right there when you texted me.
Finishing your talk as you walked across the street? So we do have a quorum now, everybody. Present tonight, we have Councilman McCuculli joining us now in-house. I've got Deputy Clerk Fromm Felter, utility billing clerk, Jamison, Mel from the Cantha, Rich Leskey, Rose Carlson, Polly Cunningham, Phil Speckel, and Carla Doncaster. And I hope there's not a test fall. Online is Stuart. And then there's a gentleman with an iPhone, but it does not identify who that person is. So I cannot announce who's online with that iPhone, so. Our first item night would be to open our public hearing on the fiscal twenty-four budget and the fiscal twenty twenty-four assessments. I declare it open. Yeah. And then, and the, the public hearing will stay open until our meeting on September the fifth. So people will have that much time to comment on the budget, take a peek at it. Give us their thoughts and, and go from there. Till Sep- oh, it's September fifth. Our next, our meeting in September, we will close it and then we will vote on our budget at that time. It is a very lean budget again compared to what we, you know, it's normal where we're at. It's about twenty-four pages. The increases that you're going to see in our general fund revenues, they're up, but that has to do with grant funding from Lions Club and additional things like that. Fish Wildlife and Parks Grant. And the Lions Club Grant are going to account for three hundred and four, three hundred and five thousand forty-two dollars worth of additional revenue in our budget for next year. For those of you who were keeping up with me last week on Facebook, the city of Shoto will see the property tax holders for personal property will see a tax decrease. On a three hundred thousand dollar home, your taxes will decrease. A valued home would be down by eighty-three dollars and seventy-one cents. On a hundred thousand dollar home would be twenty-seven dollars and ninety cents. That reduction in class for personal property taxes is a direct result of commercial property making it to the tax rolls. And the largest contributor to that for this session is the Dollar Store Building. All of that million dollar facility is now on the books. And commercial property is taxed at a rate higher than that of personal, of residential property. So therefore we get to see a reduction in the personal property and for those homeowners within the city limits of Shoto. A mill last year generated, well, we done, we, we ran ninety-nine point seven nine mills last year to come up with our, our real property taxes of two hundred and five thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars. We will generate seventy-nine point one-two mills this year for our general fund levies. The value of a mill increased to, hold on, I gotta get my note here. Value mill for last year was twenty-two forty-seven point eight seven. A value of a mill for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget year is twenty-nine hundred forty-nine dollars and thirteen cents. So it was a very nice increase. On your, as you go through this and assessments, and this comes to Councilman McCuculli, Councilman McCuculli. Northwestern Energy has our system laid out. They're having Public Service Commission meetings, our meeting this week to set the upcoming rates. And as soon as they have the upcoming rates set, they will release the plan to us with the additional costs. Okay? If we were to look at it and we'll, we'll have it before we vote on our, on our budget. We would have to see what the increased cost would be, and then we may have to assess our streetlight assessment, raise that to cover any additional costs. But it is a significant increase in the number of lights for the city of Shoto, and they would all be the LEDs that are out there currently. Mike, I believe, will. I have not seen all of Mike's budget yet. But Mike always has something in there for equipment as needed. We bought a run-in loader last year on the fiscal budget. I don't know, we're gonna have to look at garbage trucks sooner rather than later. If the one we have continues to throw codes on us the way it does. We will have dollars going up from, on the public work side continuing through grant dollars through, through this as well as we continue in this water delivery project. The only payment I think we still have is our, on the fire station. Oh, and our, yeah, RD. Are you talking about hard equipment or are you talking about loans and stuff?
We still have the loan for the waste garbage. Loan for the last two-year project from last year. Two-year loan for the larger project that we are doing now and next year. I think there's some older loans for sewer work.
So last year for twenty-three, we had total revenues of five hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-seven cents. Our proposed budget for twenty-four is eight fifty-six, two thirteen oh eight, of which three fifty or three oh four, three oh five, forty, three oh eight is grant dollars from Fish Wildlife and Parks and the Lions Club expenditures. We've carried over a grant for zoning, correct, Tom?
Yes, the zoning grant was carried over again. Changes due to the
Legislature, and now we're, we're wading back into that. I think we're at, we've made our assessments to where they need to be in order to meet our fiscal requirements for our loans from DNRC. Water, sorry, yeah, yeah. Yep.
So we just have the second increase in water in July.
Yeah.
And that will be included now and then.
That's everything the council approves.
Yeah. From what happened. And then the secondary increase in garbage in January.
And now it'll take us from thirteen to fifteen. So we've got a zipper loan that we've got paying on, we've got and then the M and M grant loan, land loan principal, I don't know which that one is. Our tree and sidewalk budget. I want to make sure I have this right as well. Since it was, since the inception in in twenty years, the street maintenance assessment, which is now a dollar twenty-five a linear foot, has gone up ninety-two cents in twenty years. And that's the, the doll that we use for our street maintenance assessment. So an average home with hundred square feet of street frontage would pay a hundred and twenty-five bucks. Linear, what's that?
Linear feet.
Linear feet, yeah. In the year two thousand, the value, the taxable value was one million four hundred seventy-six thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars. Last year it was two million two hundred forty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars. In two thousand, the city of Shoto collected a hundred and one thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars in general revenue fund. In twenty-three, we collected two hundred and twenty-four thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars. So in a twenty-three year period of time, it was about six thousand dollars a year in increased tax revenue. Yeah. I will throw it out there, you know, people have talked to us about a police department. We are not levying for one, so if we were to go levy one, we would have to go back to the public and ask for public safety levy. The city of Conrad, which is what I would consider about as close to us as possible, their payroll alone for their police department is about four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So that doesn't include maintenance on the cars, it doesn't include training, equipment, buying a vehicle, all of that stuff, maintaining any of that. So just to cover payroll, you would see your property taxes would have to jump from seventy-nine, let's do basic math, eighty mills. They would go to two hundred and forty mills. And those hundred and sixty mills would be just to cover payroll for a police department.
Chris?
Yep.
I think last time we looked at it, it, it worked out to close to a thousand dollars a household for a police force for a year.
Yeah.
Just to kind of put it in perspective.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilman.
So, so we contract with county.
Yes.
And they cover.
They cover certain parts of our codes. And if it's for law, for law enforcement, for, yes, speeding, things along those lines. Yes. That's the only part of it, and if it's a felony, it automatically goes to them. So our no. We will pay, I'm getting there, it's about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. And our law enforcement contract for next year is one seventy-five, three twenty-six, twelve. And that comes out of our general fund of roughly two fourteen oh sixty-eight. So when you take that out of that, there's not a whole lot left, as I explained.
So we have, we have street enforcement and we have felonies, of course, but we don't have any ordinance or
No, we do not. There isn't a city in Montana that has contracted law enforcement that does their ordinance work.
But do we have a city?
We do, we have two. We have a criminal city attorney, we have a civil city attorney. Yeah, a vicious dog complaint would go to them. Correct. Yes. Or a dog that's destroyed an animal or chickens or something along those lines, yes. Yes. And as we talked about dog catchers and dog pounds in the past, my, again, my conversation with folks, Conrad Police Department takes care of that through part of their budget. But those that have a dog pound are looking somewhere in the neighborhood of a two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to maintain a dog pound. And that's for infrastructure, for a building, utilities, medical for the dogs, dog food, things along those lines, and most of them that have them tell me they wish they didn't have them. Because what happens is people bring pets to them when no one's around, drop them off and leave, and they become a dumping zone for unwanted you know, animals and that.
I saw online or emails today. One town after like seventy-two hours, they put them down. They're not collecting.
And again, that would be an expense the city would have to bear in doing that. Any other questions? We'll keep this open for the general public until our meeting on September the fifth.
Where are those packages available?
Here at City Hall. Yep, you can get a copy of them. We will leave the bu- the budget hearing open and we'll move on to our next item, which is approval of the minutes of August first. I have a motion from Councilman D.
I'll second.
A second from Councilman McCuculli. Changes or corrections? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? They will be accepted. Anyone leaving the state? You're back. New business tonight, we had nothing under old business, new business tonight would be vote on authorization to place delinquent water and garbage charges on property taxes. Motion from Councilman Diaz, second from Councilman McCuculli. Tom, what's the total?
Right now. Three thousand forty-four dollars seventy-one cents. Across about a seven-figure count.
I gotta say, in my years here, it's strange to see people, some people pay their bills once a year, some people pay them twice a year. Those that pay them on a month-to-month basis seem to be more and more of an enigma. Any additional questions? Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Tom? Get her done.
And I continue to monitor that until right before taxes are and then so that number could go down.
Item two is to vote on the TBIT fiscal forty-four work plan, and that is laid out in your packet ahead of you.
Second.
Sorry, Councilman Merja, your, the delay in, in technology let Councilman McCuculli beat you in. And a second from Councilman McCuculli.
Tom, is there any major changes to your plan?
The only change is that we paid our second promised amount to the board authority, so that has currently been removed from the budget. And then and that's not the one they changed.
But that's consistent with your answer.
I just, we, we, it sounds like we got a couple of newer people in the audience. Could you just give like a one or two minute what the TBIT is?
Sure. So the TBIT was created about seven years ago. Other cities in Montana have them as well. And it's essentially a, a bed tax. So the city approved it that we can charge one dollar per night, per room at the participating hotels.
Campgrounds.
And camp.
It can be. It can be, if they opt in.
But only the like thirty-nine plus days you not pay the tax or government agencies don't pay that tax either. So the Sage Shop was the first one to do that, and then we did a couple of years after that asked if the Big Sky and the Dunkther would participate as well, so we did expand that district. And so the numbers have fluctuated, of course, as the number of rooms rented per year. So I took the remaining budget of unspent dollars and then estimated about I think it was six, six thousand dollars for coming in. That seemed to be going back down from the last year for the total budget of
Yep, yep.
Let me clarify, TBIT stands for tourism business improvement this year. The footprint of the district itself is just the property line of the Sage Stop, the Dunkther, Big Sky. If the campground joint would be just a footprint of the campground for the cabins. And the funds, my understanding is the funds can be used for tourism developments, basically with more heads and beds.
Yep. Yeah, so to promote events or tourism that encourage people to stay the nights, then it keeps that money rolling. And so we do created a brochure for Shoto that we distribute.
Put in the B, the visit Shoto website, hosting incident.
Help post the visit Shoto website, couple of billboards up by
Glacier, Isla.
Yeah. And then we get funds to keep local events to pass for the fun, to help their events. We tend to give more to the events that are multi-day that will have people happy staying the night.
Wild Wings, the Yoga Festival, those types of things. Or the dinosaur center, when we did an expansion.
The dinosaur center, I imagine, with a lot of urban access to Shoto. So it'll be, they've got some money for their, their facility.
Any other questions? Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Stan's approved. Next time would be to vote for the TBIT appointment board, a board appointment for Diane Galahad, who is asking to be reappointed to the TBIT.
I so moved. So, second.
I have a motion from Councilman D and a second from Councilman Merja.
She wants to stay out, right?
Yeah, we're not railroading her. She actually asked. For your term, yep. I want to say September.
I think we're on a September. It was originally created in August.
This, she was renewed eight of twenty twenty-three expiring.
Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Let Diane know, no one leaves the firm.
It's actually a really fun board, I mean, just get that good money out of people.
Item four is vote on pay request number six for prospect construction. That is in your packet as well.
My second.
I have a motion from Councilman D and a second from Councilman McCuculli. Any questions or concerns on the, on the project? They are trucking along, they're making good headway. That's been it. That's it. Just the one, yes. Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? We will get that taken care of in the morning, Tom. Vote on resolution nine oh six, changing of the signatures at the bank.
Move to a resolution nine oh six.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman D and a second from Councilman Merja. This is that the city employees and elected officials below are named authorized, signed documents provided therein, and attached bank resolution is approved for Christine Doyne, Mayor, Steve D, Council President, Mike Maples, Public Work Director, and Tom Fromm Felder, Finance Office, Finance Officer. And this will last until December thirty-first, and we will have a new set of signees after the change in officers.
Do all the checks take two signatures?
The bank technically doesn't watch that, but
We do.
internally gets two signatures and all.
It's part of our audit.
Yeah.
And, and our auditor for that, the bank doesn't.
It's a far better checks and, pardon the pun, checks and balances system to do it that way. In the insurance world where I'm at, boards of directors that do it get a better break on their insurance because it's less likely for any type of internal siphoning off of funds or issues like that.
I was just wondering, because Insani Foundation needs to, or we use to, as well as
Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Tom, we'll get that signed tomorrow as well. Item six would be the claims.
I move that we pay the claims.
I have a motion from Council, from Councilman Merja and a second from Councilman McCuculli.
And I will come sign them tomorrow.
Okay. Questions or comments on the bills? Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? We will pay the bills. Jumping into reports quick, like three one eight did not give me a law enforcement report yet. He got married. Free was distracted. I'll get caught up with him when he's done and get everything updated for next month. Devin Seehoss. Yeah, he and Katie got married a couple of weeks ago. City judge had five city cases, three vicious dogs, assault felony, a bad check and a speeding. So the felony would automatically go to the county anyways. I didn't get a report from Jen on the criminal side of things. The civil side of things is attached there, reviewed background materials for the Board of Commerce, Community Development Block Housing Grant. Review of materials, extensive review of materials and information relating to pending zoning matter regarding setbacks and general communications with city and staff regarding operational issues. Tom? Zoning and building permits, there were Zoning and building permits, there were five?
Five. And it is slowing down, although we did have a lady come in today and ask about replacing windows, which does not require permit once you change the shape per side. Um, but several fences have removed, yeah. No new bills right now. But there are some new bills coming.
Hmm. Um, Mike's will have an update for us, I told him tonight, he didn't have to worry about it, because we were doing budget stuff, and we would get it taken care of. But I know they have been busier than busy. And again, no good deed goes unpunished. I know on the northeast side of town, northwest side of town, there are folks whose wells, sand points are going dry because of the new water lines being put in, where water is no longer seeping out and they're struggling to get wells. Uh, we also been hurt, we also heard from the um, cemetery, that the, the little stream over there behind the baseball fields that they use to pull water out of, they're having a very difficult time getting enough water in there now to water the cemetery. And my, I'm not a geologist by any means, but it tells me that with less water leaking, there's less water in the ground and less water to make it out there to somebody else's facilities. Um, they're hauling millings in on the city public works side and piling them over at the weather beater, and those will be used for the project when we're done with the waters, water lines going back over the streets and getting those planted in as part of the chip seal. Tom, you got anything else from your world? Sean, anything from utility world?
Request.
Councilman, Councilman, Councilman Merja. I lost, oh, he's back. Anything from your world? You're muted.
Uh, no, am I, am I better? I had, uh, yeah, the only thing I had was the same thing you did about the wells, I had heard that one. Um, and people were asking what, uh, what the scope of the project was gonna end up being just so they could plan accordingly. So, good problem to have.
Okay. Councilman D?
Uh, Lions Club is still selling trip of month tickets, our first drawing will be third Monday of September, uh, which will also coincide with the celebration of Bob Knox's hundredth birthday.
His birthday on the.
A couple of days later. Um, the actual birthday is a couple of days.
Yeah.
Um, those trip of the month tickets do help fund the pool, and so we're, we're a little behind where we were last year, so if you haven't bought yours yet, please get it turned in, and we really appreciate it.
Update on the tennis courts, I haven't been by there.
It's a lot of dirt, and, uh, it is not a parking spot, it is not an RV trailer spot.
There are people parked in there over the weekend.
Yeah.
Parked there and walked over to Lock Cabin for lunch and.
Yeah. It is, it is proceeding, um, they're doing a great job.
Um, I believe Chad said they're gonna start fencing tomorrow, they're gonna fence it off before they pour it so that they can keep deer footprints and people prints out of it.
I saw.
It looked like there was orange fence around it when I was.
Uh, I saw, I'll send like, stomach over there over the weekend, presuming checking out the engineering, making sure things are spec and keeping on top of that, so we do appreciate that, and it's moving forward.
We did have some issues with some folks on the south side of it, they were concerned about the trees that were taken out and the trees that were cut, so it was surveyed and the trees that were taken out were on city property as were the brush that was taken out on city property, and we had an individual who wasn't happy because they had no more privacy in their master bedroom because all the brush, bushes have been taken down. And it's, again, no good deed goes unpunished, but you don't want to spend a quarter of a million dollars on concrete and have trees growing underneath it, that could push it up and, and create additional issues for it, so. Um, I know that it, the Lions Club addressed it, and I know that I've heard that there's a plan in place when it's done to try and help deal with some of those privacy issues on that. Um, what else, Councilman McCauley?
Uh, can you just explain for me and for the general public, I've had a couple question, people question the situation with the city employees being as involved as they are in Alliance Club project?
City property.
Okay.
And so ultimately, the, the city owns the, the, uh, property and owns, we will own and ensure and maintain those when they're done. And so that's why they're over there.
And it was my understanding as well that some of the money that had came in, the city was administering
We are.
through their budget.
Yeah.
Those, the city has general oversight for that reason.
Yes.
As well.
Yeah, it is a city-owned facility when it's all set and done.
That's.
And to be honest with you, so is the swimming pool.
And the bandshell.
And the bandshell, yeah.
I just want to make sure I'm.
Yeah. No, we're not donating to charitable to, to them or to any other entity like that, no, that's city property, city-owned, city maintained.
City or civic organizations are actually helping.
Correct, correct, the civic organizations went out, got the funds.
Yeah.
Got the matching funds, got the grant. We are administering the grant and we will be responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of that, that facility as well as the bound shell going forward.
I wanted to hear.
Yeah, we insure them.
Your mouth.
Yep, they're on our insurance, yes.
But yeah, that's okay.
Well, we got the house of the Pavilion back in the day.
Yeah.
Fund raised to support the Pavilion, but it was a city problem.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilman, I should have been, I should have been ahead of that, and if that ever crossed my.
Couple of people questioned me, and I had explained it, but I wanted to be one hundred percent sure that I had
Yeah.
that I understood it and that I had articulated it back to the public.
And like the Lions Club will come in and we do the weeding and stuff and keep it clean, we help out with the ice skating rink, you know, we out of our own pockets for that, largely.
Balloons?
The balloons are coming, um, Friday night, there'll be balloons, I think there's gonna be four. Couple from Canada and other places here and yon, there's been a ton of coordination, the weather's gonna turn a little bit yucky on Saturday, even if they can't fly, they wanna set up over in the field behind the hospital for the enjoyment of the extended care residence there, and they will light up and they'll, they'll do a glow. Um, they're still looking for donations for propane so they can do a night glow.
True.
Um, and Jerry Green's always very accommodating with me having somebody, if it's not himself, it's somebody to meet them down there for extra propane and things like that, and there's been a lot of chatter about whether or not they're gonna be doing paid rides, the Canadian balloonists can't do the paid rides because they don't have the right licenses. For the states, it has to be a special, very expensive coordinated effort, but, um, there will be, I think, some rides available. Weather dependent again.
Oh, yeah.
They want to fly Friday, they always do it really early in the morning or late in the evening as it starts to.
So Friday night, early Saturday morning and Saturday evening would be.
Yes, and again, Sunday night, I think two of the balloons, the two Canadian balloons plan to stay and maybe even do a Monday morning.
Okay, cool.
Weather dependent. Cause they need certain number of flights and.
They need hours.
So, but, um, they love the Rocky Mountain front, they love regardless of which way the wind's going, they're either going towards the mountains, which is beautiful, or they're going across the prairie east, and it's.
We've chased them out to TL Gaff between here and Power, we've chased them up to Peoples.
Yeah.
To the west, it, it is, it's, it's kind of cool to watch, the kids, the littles love it.
And the balloonists that have been here in the past will all be back, and they're all very accommodating for question and answers and explanations, and they're really good about letting people be hands-on when they start to conflate and.
I've been in on the Facebook messages on this one, and it's miles, miles long.
So, uh, there should be a viewing opportunity anywhere along Seventh Street Northwest
Yep.
in our neighborhood, or the hospital, ambulance barn, parking lot, I don't know what the rules are about people parking in the hospital parking lot, there's usually plenty of.
As long as the ambulances can get in and out, that's unfair, that's fine. We should be fine.
Yeah.
Any water issues? I know your neighbors been watering a lot.
Something you just can't fight.
Yeah. Um, from my desk, and tomorrow night, we'll have an open house over at the Pavilion to talk about taxes, the budget, um, the new floodplain map that's out, and this is a preliminary map, and I may be ahead of the curve, but I would rather be proactive and have people know what's potentially coming. And rather than wait until we're stuck having to give remarks to FEMA and to DNRC.
Is this the newer map?
That is the newest version I have, now I've been told that there's updated data, but it has not been downloaded to where we at the public level can get it.
Does Brian have?
What's that?
Does Brian?
No, he does not either.
Okay.
I will have that map and I will bring that map, the, that's the eighty-four map. And this is the, the newest proposed one that you can take a look at and, um, and has expanded the floodway, there's some hiccups in it, Phyllis was pointing about when she was standing here earlier today, and it's true. Um, so we'll, we'll get our way through it. Tomorrow night, we'll also answer everybody's questions they have concerning taxes and, and things like that, I have five years worth of our property taxes here, I have a spreadsheet I put together, and as we get the other ones taken care of, I will as the twenty-three taxes come out, I will update my spreadsheet and, and do that, and I've been asked to do this by Montana Free Press so they can have an idea of what our taxes are doing to others compared to other communities. Um.
Tax rebate thing.
Yep, tax rebate thing today, if you're property tax owner for your primary residence, you can go sign up and get your allowance up to six twenty-five this year and six twenty-five next year for your, um, from the state of Montana for property tax rebate. Um,
You know, it's.
Oh, yes, we got it, we received a certificate of appreciation last Thursday night from Alubian to the City of Shoto for creating and inspiring healthier lives through their dedication to community partnership and going above and beyond the call of duty. Unfortunately, I was unable to be there Thursday night to get the award, so my brother brought it to me and gave it to me on Saturday at the West Fork Ranger Station when I ran across him up there. Um, we're getting more complaints, not only, the dog complaints have kind of dropped off, but as temperatures heat up, we're getting smell complaints from, whether it's animal feces, bird feces, um, chickens, a lot of chicken complaints these days, it could be a great fall for fried chicken. Um, so we've got some letters getting ready to go out to some landowners, uh, garbage smells, people piling garbage in the backs of their vehicles and not hauling it, things along those lines, and that, those letters will be out, I've reached out to the sanitary in on them to make sure I'm within my purview of doing these things and that it doesn't fall to him. Um, we're starting to fall off trees, we're really starting to fall off the trees, and if you have extra fruit that you don't want, let us know, we're putting together a Facebook page for fruit gleening, so we can get it to folks to try and keep, we don't want bears in town or any other animal thing, so if it's a banner year for berries, we're hoping that they'll find enough food out there, but if you've got extra food, extra fruit on your trees and you don't want it, let us know and we'll find a way to get it to somebody that will see that it gets to the proper places. I know that I've got apples galore at my house, so we've been dealing with my, our city codes, chapter ninety-four nuisances, health and site sanitation, so um, again, working with Austin on that. Um, I've got Mrs. Doncaster, these are for you in Montana, a letter to, we have no expectation of privacy as elected officials, so confidential mailings, we cannot accept because minute these open, anybody who wants to have access to can have access to them. So if there's matters of personnel in here, things along those lines, I would ask you to take these back and address them differently, or if there's nothing that the public can't read in here. Yes.
Okay, there is not anything that's not out there as information already. Um, it's all information that I found, and it's, it's implication that I thought should be handled. Um, you know, but it's not like, and not personal, it, um.
It's just when it says confidential, Montana Public Ri- Right to Know, and
I'm a learning.
That's a red flag.
I, I, I think it's.
Both our attorney says do not open these.
Okay. It's not, it's not like that, it's obviously code and property and implications that it's the wrong people, people that wanted to be malicious saw these things, might think that much like it that way.
Yeah.
Um, it's not, it's not personal about me, and it's not, uh, it's a question I, that I thought was very curious.
I will run that by the attorneys and see if they, what they, and ask them what they want us to do.
And that's great, if you want me to open it, um, I don't know, I don't know what to do about that.
Okay.
I'm, I definitely want to.
I will find out what they want us to, and then I will correspond with you or reach out to you directly.
I didn't send you out um, to the review.
Yeah.
It's like, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so that you put me in.
Okay. Um, to the floodplain issue again, uh, I've spoken with Senator Tester's staff, Senator Danza's staff was here today. Representative Rosendale's staff will be here tomorrow afternoon to, to go over this with us as they are aware of it, this, we are not the only community that this is having an effect on, um, some of the smaller communities like us, Harlowtown is getting hit very hard with the Musso River and things like that, so they're aware of what's going on, and we'll keep a close eye with us there. Um, patience, I'm asking for folks to have some patience with us, we will get the streets rehabilitated when everything's done. We, it's crazy for us to, we're at the whim of some other folks that are gonna come in and help us do this, so as soon as we can, we will get them done and get everything, we'll get back to better than what they were before they were taken care of, we will continue to be storing millings from the interstate over at the Weatherbeater, because that's the perfect stuff we need. Um, school's getting close, I will reach out to the sheriff and ask them to step up their patrols on Seventh on this street, and, um, keep an eye on the kids, you know, we had the incident at the courthouse last ten days ago, and I want to make sure that that doesn't happen again, I was gonna do a letter, but if I did a letter for all of us to sign, we'd have to put it out here to the public, and it would, and then I didn't have it on the agenda, so I didn't do it. I do have a, a person, a, a letter of correspondence that I can sign and put it out to the public, but I'll have a chat with Keith first before I do that and let him know that it's coming and that we are, more and more people are asking for a better patrol in and around the school and on certain streets throughout the town. Um, we've seemed to have knocked down the alley complaints.
Not really, but we're just getting quiet.
Oh, wow. I was just jinxed, no, um, and that is on my, that. Yeah, that is on my, my letter as well, Phyllis know that, um, so.
I just think sometimes just, um, are sitting.
Oh, amen.
Slows people down. Slows down over here because.
They see that, that's thirty-one eight, they see Devon's sheriff's car sitting there on two eighty-seven. So, yeah, you had a deputy that was just a couple block, you know, across the street there on Seventh. That's how hidden his cars always face the south on two eighty-seven, so as people come down the hill in Shoto, oh, there's a, they always stop and slow down that way. So. Um, other than that, before I die, we'll take public comment for anything that's not on the agenda tonight, if there's anything out there.
People know that.
Yes, ma'am. Six thirty.
Okay.
Six thirty at the Pavilion. Grab a cheeseburger from the Legion. Lord knows I'm going to, and then come on over.
And if I did, could I still buy a beer, that was me not known, with the, not six thirty.
It is six thirty, yeah. I have a couple of phone calls tomorrow afternoon, not gonna deal with her, we could have done it earlier, but I figured let people get a meal and then come down. Mr. Rich? Rich Lusky, the floor is yours.
Yeah, Rich Lusky, president of the Roadkill Car Club and a citizen of Shoto, actually resident of Shoto. Um, first of all, with the Roadkill, had a great year, thank you for letting me put it at the information center again, approving that I could have it there.
Total car count for the year.
Um, I'm a hundred fifty. Average a little bit over forty each time. And, uh, people love coming up here, I don't know why, I give them a hard time, they love that they could say, we're coming up to see you.
Ice cream, ice cream doesn't hurt.
It's not the ice cream, it's, it's.
I know, I know, I agree.
Um, I did have a minute here for that, and, um, as far as myself, I wanna say that I did run out of water, got, at, right after the car show, I got home, went to the bathroom, washed my hands, got one glass of water, and my well was dry. From then pumping the so far down in the.
Yeah.
Thing. I, uh, couldn't sleep that night, wondering what I was gonna do, building up a big head of steam, coming here to talk to the mayor and giving my two cents, and Tom was the only. give him my two cents and Tom was the only one here. So I couldn't give him my head. He was so nice. He gave me numbers and I was, I walked up here, so by the time I got home, I called Mike Maples and he says, I know about it already. So he offered to give me bottled water, jugs of water, anything I'd like, you know, to get me through and at first I said, no, I've got plenty of bottled water. And then uh, as the day went on, I'm thinking about, I don't have water tomorrow, I'm gonna need some for the weekend. But Thursday night, about twenty-four hours after I lost it, I got it back. So I'm just, just saying thank you for offering and uh, it was, it was good to know that the city's back and anybody that needs it.
Thank you, and I would tell you that Mike's had conversations with them. They're actually sucking down as low as twenty feet. And Mike's telling them not to do that.
Well, Mike was pretty.
Mike was pretty.
You thought you were worked up.
Yesterday morning, yesterday morning, Mike was fired up because the, the sewer lines at a maximum depth are eight feet, so suck it down to ten feet. If there's no water in there, don't suck it to twenty feet.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
Suck it down to where there's no water, lay your pipes and then move on. There, those wells and those, those things that they're pumping can.
And I, I know I wasn't the only one.
No.
I did like how the, the city was, was to back, back me up if I needed water.
Thank you. Yes, Phyllis.
What time it's now? Where is it?
Over on the north, north, yeah. So Tom Cross was another one, Shane and Lisa Gunderson were another ones, and Shane and Lisa had requested to hook to city water and we're working with that. But Saturday night, when I got out of the mountains, I had a message that they had no water in their well. Again, was not our intentions to do that and on I'm learning as I sit here day after day, truly no good deed goes unpunished. And when you try and do something you think is going to benefit, there is an opposite, equal and opposite reaction everywhere, so. Anybody else before we head out till September the fifth? No. Have fun, be safe. Thank you, everybody. We'll see you September fifth, and we have to be back here again for that one because it's in the cantha for the public hearings. All right, good night, everybody. Thank you, Councilman Merja, for joining us.